I am the City Council President. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/citicouncil-tv. I'd like to ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their phones and electronic devices. Thank you. I'd like to please ask my colleagues and those in the audience to be respectful of each other. I'd also like to ask that we do not disrupt the meeting, and if people are disruptive in the audience, you'll be asked to leave, and if you fail to comply, you will be escorted According to city council rules, there are no signs allowed in the chamber. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the rolls to ascertain the presence of a quorum? Counselor Arroyo.
Right.
Counselor Baker. Counselor Bock.
Present.
Counselor Braden.
Present.
Counselor Coletta. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson.
Counselor Flaherty.
Here.
Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Lara. Counselor Louis Jean.
Here.
Counselor Mejia.
Here.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
And Counselor Worell. A quorum is present. I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. This week's clergy is Reverend Art Gordon from St. John's Missionary Baptist Church, invited by Counselor Louis Jean. Counselor Louis Jean, would you like to come to the podium at this time and introduce our clergy for today?
Thank you, President Flynn. I want to thank Reverend Art Gordon for being here today. I want to apologize to him because I promised him some Haitian food in exchange for his prayer, and I forgot that, but I'll get you on the second time around. And I also was like, you know, give me your bio, and he said, "All that people need to know is that I'm from Georgia and I love people." Both of those things are true, but I think that he is meritorious of me reading this brief bio about who he is and how he contributes to our city. So Reverend Art Gordon is a fifth-generation pastor from Georgia. After receiving his Bachelor of Arts degree in history from Savannah State University, he attended Boston University School of Theology. As a student, he was a vice president of the Student Association, a recipient of the Donald A. Wells Prize for preaching, and inducted into the Student Honor Society after graduating with a master's in divinity. In 2017, Reverend Gordon was elected as the youngest pastor in the history of the St. John Missionary Baptist Church in Roxbury. He recently celebrated his fifth year of pastor ministry to the Roxbury community. Reverend Gordon served as the Roxbury Neighborhood Captain for Spark Boston in 2016 to 2017. He's a new Leaders Council Fellow and a member of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. He also works as a senior advisor for Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley, formerly of this chamber, where he leads on community engagement and stakeholder management. He is married to Portia Franklin Gordon and father to Jackson Gordon. If you have not had the opportunity to hear him preach, I really encourage you to make it out to St. John. His gift is palpable and obvious to everyone who has the blessing to hear his word, and he's also really funny. So he, you know, there's a lot of jokes in there. So thank you, Reverend Gordon, for blessing us today, this morning.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Counselor Rupzi, and to all, whatever your posture is for prayer, I would invite you to join me. Oh God, we give thanks for this new day that you have made, and we give thanks for an opportunity to live in this world. We thank you for this great city of Boston, its rich history, its culture, and its traditions, and we give you thanks for the work we are doing today to make its future even better. We are here today, God, because we want to see this city become a better city, and we're here because we envision that purpose. We envision a city that no matter your socioeconomic status, that every person has the ability to afford and buy a home. We envision a city where no matter your background or the language you speak, that everywhere you go is accessible to you. We envision a city where violence is usurped by love, by hope, and by justice. Give us the strength and the power to continue to work in such a way that makes this city a better place. Help us not to forget the homeless, the hungry, the tired, the worn, the abused, the lost. Help us to keep those in our minds as we work together hand in hand to make this city better. We ask that you bless us to do that work each and every day, for we know that you are with us. Bless us in this meeting today. In your name we pray. Amen.
At this time, if you're able, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Gordon, for those inspiring words. Thank you for the important work you do in our city. Mr. Clerk, please let the record be reflected that Counselor Baker and Counselor Coletta Approval of the minutes. Now we're on to the approval of the -- first order is the approval of the minutes, which is seeing and hearing no discussion on the matter. The chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting say aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 1389, please.
Docet number 1389. Notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of October 31st, 2022.
Thank you. Docet 1389 will be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 1390.
Docet number 1390. Communication was received from the city clerk transmitting a communication from the Boston Landmarks Commission for city council action on the designation of the petition number 259.17, the Bond Hampton House, 88 Lambert Avenue, Roxbury, Mass., in effect after December 1st, 2022, if not acted upon.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Baker, the chair of the Committee on Planning, Transportation, Development. Counselor Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm looking to suspend pass Docet 1390 today. On October 25th, 2022, the Boston Landmark Commission voted unanimously to designate the Bond Hampton House located at 88 Lambert Avenue, Roxbury, as a landmark under the provisions of Chapter 772 of the Acts of 1975. In no action -- if no action is taken by the city council before December 1st, 2022, the Bond Hampton House will automatically become a landmark. Therefore, I am seeking suspension of the rules and passage of Docet 1390. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docet 1390. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docet is passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 1391.
Docet number 1391. Communication was received from the Office of Blackmail Advancement of the report entitled "The State of Blackmails in Boston."
Thank you. Docet 1391 will be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, can you please ensure the record is reflected that Counselor Fernandez-Anderson is present? Matter's recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 0634.
Docet number 0634. Order for a hearing to discuss the creation of a civilian construction details program.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Bock. Counselor Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had this hearing on Monday out at the Bowling Building, and I wanted to thank the BPS and Bowling Building staff for enabling that and IGR for helping to coordinate, and special thanks to our central staff, Megan, Candace, and Ethan, for a lot of work setting up out there. We were there because elections was in the chamber, but I think it just underscored that it is challenging having off-site hearings, and so really grateful to the council staff. We -- I was joined there by my colleagues, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Louis Jean, Counselor Baker, Counselor Mejia, yourself, President Flynn, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, and Counselor Arroyo, and of course by Counselor Lara, who is the sponsor of the matter. We were joined by the administration, Chief of Streets Yasha Franklin Hodge, BPD Superintendent Eddings, and Captain Hamilton. They were the administration panel, and then there was also an advocate panel, Families for Justice as Healing, the Boston Cyclists Union, and many other coalition members who both wrote in and gave public testimony. There were a number of counselor info requests that came out of that, so I just wanted to flag for everybody that were in the process of collating those into a formal information request, and we'll be sending it over to the department. I think, you know, as folks know, we had to recess the hearing for a while because we couldn't get the floor seated back, and so I just want to underscore that I think, you know, no matter how heated everybody feels about any particular issue, we have to be able to have public hearings where people speak at the mic, and then when they're asked to seat the mic, seat the microphone to the next person. We had dozens of people testifying on Monday, so that was a challenge. But this is a very active matter. I think that one of the things that we discussed, Mr. President, is that while there were a lot of policy conversations about the details, a lot of the actual details on the details are in the police contract, and so I think it will continue to relate to further conversation that our committee is having about the contract and relates to the negotiations that are ongoing at the bargaining table today. So I expect to have further action on this front, but for now, Mr. President, we just ask to keep it in committee. Thank you.
Thank you. In Docet 0634, we remain in committee. motions, orders, and resolutions. Assistant Clerk, please read Docet 1392.
Docet 1392. Counselor Flynn offered the following, an ordinance amending the City of Boston Code related to closed capturing of public-facing televisions.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you.
Oops.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, may I add Counselor Louis Jean as an original cosponsor?
Seeing no objection, you may be -- Counselor Louis Jean may be added.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. This is an ordinance that I filed in partnership with the Disability Commission of the mayor's office to address how we can ensure public-facing televisions provide closed captioning for persons with certain disabilities so that we can expand communication access through public-facing televisions and ensure that persons with disabilities have full access to information and resources shared to the public. I filed a hearing order last year and earlier this year on this issue because this was one of the issues that impacted many people with disabilities across the city. As you know, televisions in public places have often played an important role in conveying information to the public. They broadcast press conferences from public officials, breaking news, public health updates, and other critical programming that provides information and resources to residents. Unfortunately, many of these public-facing televisions do not enable closed captioning and therefore are not accessible to persons who are deaf and hard of hearing or who have hearing loss due to age or illness, developmental disabilities, sensory disabilities. To reduce this barrier, businesses can enable the closed captions function on their TVs so that a live transcript of the program's audio content is shown. Having a visible caption, that eliminates a significant communication obstacle for persons with hearing loss and other disabilities, and it would also increase access to information for the general public as well. So this ordinance would require public-facing TVs, such as the ones in restaurants and bars, to enable closed captioning. This is a simple step to ensure that everyone will be able to understand the information given on public televisions. It is my hope, working with Counselor Louis Jean as well, but it's our hope that we can have an expediated hearing on this and get it passed. It is my goal, or it is everyone's goal maybe, to try to have this passed before the end of the year. Thank you, Counselor Braden, and looking forward to working with all of my colleagues, and I know they've been strong supporters for persons with disabilities across our city, so looking forward to working again with our colleagues and with the original cosponsors as well, Counselor Louis Jean. Thank you, Counselor Braden.
The chair recognizes Counselor Louis Jean.
Thank you. And I want to thank the President for bringing this important issue to the fore. It's something that I've heard about from constituents. It's something that I care deeply about just as a person, as a chair of the Civil Rights Committee. I think it's vitally important that we provide and require closed captioning. Myself, I want closed captioning on TVs for restaurants and bars because it's often really even hard to hear what's happening. So closed captioning is vitally important to deaf, hard-of-hearing, those with hearing loss due to age or illness, developmental disabilities, sensory disabilities, non-native English speakers, and others. It's important that we make all public televisions turn on closed captioning to allow individuals to fully experience the program without ever having to actually hear the audio track. When a program is closed captioned, individuals can pick up on sarcasm, understand the anger of a crowd, or understand who is talking when they're not on screen. Without closed captioning, all of this important information is lost, and those with hearing difficulties miss out. While closed captioning technology exists, it's not helpful if it's not being used. In countless restaurants, bars, waiting rooms, and the like, televisions play without closed captioning for no other reason than they weren't set up to do so. I recently was out watching the women's soccer finals, and we had to, you know, make sure that the bar, you know, turned on closed captioning so that we could make sure we were picking up on everything. So it's really just time that we change this behavior, and I want to commend the Disabilities Commission for always centering the needs of those who are disabled and differently abled. I was just working with them in close partnership this week on issues of accessibility in our streets, and it really does need to be part of the center of everything we do. Think about those who are often not centered and are excluded, and make sure that we try to center them in all that we do. So thank you, President Flynn, for bringing this to the floor, and I look forward to working with you on this.
Thank you, Counselor Louis Jean. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Chair, I just want to thank --
Oops. I think it's working now.
Thank you, Chair. So I thank my colleagues and also would like to ask President Flynn to consider adding me as a third cosponsor. I know we worked in deep partnership in our office throughout the journey on this particular issue and some of the hearings that we hosted. We also learned that one of the issues that bubble up to the top in regards to closed captioning is that when there is a state of emergency, an information that needs to be shared needs to also be accessible to those who have hard-of-hearing. And so as someone who's always uplifting the needs to represent all means all, I'm really excited to support this effort and ask my colleague to consider adding me as a third sponsor to join you alongside making it happen based on the work that we've done over the last two years on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. Counselor Bock, do you have your note? Okay. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? Anyone else like to add their name? Counselor Arroyo? Counselor Bock? Counselor Coletta? Counselor Fernandez-Anderson? Counselor Flaherty? Counselor Lara? Counselor Mejia? Counselor Murphy? And Counselor Braden? Docet 1392 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Thank you.
Counselor Braden? Yes, Counselor Flynn? Counselor Braden, may I ask that you consider adding Counselor Mejia as an original third, as an original cosponsor as well?
Thank you. Counselor Mejia will be added as a third original cosponsor. Thank you, Counselor Mejia.
Assistant Clerk, could you please read Docet 1393, please?
Docet 1393. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson offered the following. Order for a hearing to discuss renaming the Roxbury Branch Library to Newbyan Library.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you, Assistant Clerk. Hopefully you're not quivering there in your seats. It's not too nerve-wracking. How's it going?
Good.
Thank you, Counselor -- President Flynn. There has been an ongoing process of community engagement and activism led by Siddiqui Canbone along with Nubian Square Coalition and Black Community Information Center, with the support of significant sectors of the community to change the name of the Roxbury Library in Nubian Square to the Nubian Library. Both Mayor Wu and David Leonard have made statements favorable to such a change, but as of yet, no concrete steps have been made or have been taken to implement the name change. In fact, recently, after being led to believe that the Library Board of Justiz was the final decision-maker in the name process, we came to discover that it is actually the Public Facilities Commission that has the authority to change the name. Mind you, this is after months of engagement, activism, meetings, and discussions. Well, they say information is power, so -- but since learning that it is the Public Facilities Commission that ultimately makes the decision, we haven't heard anything from them either despite a couple of inquiries. In any case, it strikes me that this process should not be that difficult. Dudley Square recently becoming Nubian Square, and the library is the very same neighborhood and obviously a staple in the African-American community. The name serves to honor the African ancestry of the predominantly black community in library that the library is in, and it acts to pay tribute to those who remember a Nubian Notion, a thriving black-owned business for clothes to 50, I would say about close to 50 years on 146 Dudley Street in the heart of Roxbury, actually also on Warren Street. I actually used to work at Anubian Notions when I was just 15, along with my other jobs, but in my efforts to support my family at a very young age, this small black-owned business was very supportive to young black teens in the hood. And so shout out to Anubian Notions and all of its innovators. In short, I believe this name change is a winning move. It would just hearken back to both ancient and modern history in black community and send a positive message to activists and advocates that their concerns are respected by those in positions of power within our city. I look forward to working with everyone from the Public Facilities Commission to the mayor, to the council, to Owen Office, hopefully Chief Mallore from ONS, to the people of Nubian Square, to ensure that before long, Roxbury Library will be known as a Nubian Library. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. Would anyone like to speak on this matter or add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, can you please add Counselor Arroyo? Counselor Bock? Counselor Braden? Counselor Coletta? Counselor Flaherty? Counselor Louis Jean? Counselor Mejia? Counselor Murphy? Please add the chair. Docet 1393 will be referred to the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology. Assistant Clerk, can you please read Docet 1394, please?
Docet 1394. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson offered the following. Order for a hearing to discuss how Boston Public Schools are addressing the needs of the parents of English-language learners/students.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor President Flynn. If I may, if you'd allow me to suspend the rules and add Counselor Louis Jean and Counselor Mejia as original sponsors.
Hearing no objection. Counselor Louis Jean and Counselor Mejia are added. The chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez-Anderson.
Thank you, President Flynn. EL students make up to a third of the students in BPS. We all have talked about this and have worked on these issues, and I know that this is one that we all care deeply about. EL students and their parents often need more specialized assistance to help to deal with language barriers. Many parents of EL students do not speak English at a proficient level to be able to assist their children with educational process, thereby supporting their academic success. School staff are at times ill-equipped to assist them. In addition to language barriers, many parents of EL students have a lack of knowledge about U.S. education system, making them less likely to speak up and assert themselves. Many of these parents are forced to work multiple jobs. They are overworked and underpaid, leaving them without the time and energy to attend school meetings and be as engaged in their child's education as they would want to be. This state of affairs needs to be addressed. I recently met with some advocates and BPS administrative staff who also are expressing the need to be more proactive or intentional in how we address this need. Our parents of BPS students have the right to access essential information in their preferred language of communication, and so therefore I hope to once again work with my colleagues on this hearing order. I worked for BPS for several years, whereas in addition to partnering with, as what they call FCOC, Family and Community Outreach Manager or Coordinator, whatever they call it nowadays, a long time ago, not too long because you guys know I'm young, but in that capacity, I also taught ESOL classes to these, to some of these parents in the Parents University program that they have. So deeply am invested in this issue and looking forward to seeing how we can actually support or work with the administration to look at how we are allocating funds to supporting parents in learning English again so that they can support their child's academic success. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. The chair recognizes Counselor Louis Jean. Counselor Louis Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and I just want to thank my colleague, Counselor Tanya Fernandez-Anderson, for bringing this order, hearing order, to the floor. I just think it's an incredibly important topic, and she highlighted the importance, why it's so important. Of course, you know, our primary responsibility and obligation is to this, is to our students who we've seen lagging behind, especially when it comes to our English-language learners. We want to make sure that we're devoting a lot of our energy there, but I also think about how so often the parents of English-language learners are not able to be connected to their school communities because of language barriers, because they're out hustling at these two or three different jobs. And I think about all of the potential, mispotential of what they could fully be if they had more support at BPS, and the reason why, not to, you know, overburden our schools, but it is a vector. It is a vector where parents interact with government, with the public resource, and I think that if we can be more intentional in that space to make sure that we are providing resources to parents so that they can thrive, so that they can know about better, you know, job opportunities, maybe even with the city, or learn more job opportunities, maybe even with the city, or learn more about the English ESOL classes they can take for themselves, I think that would be great. My father, you know, I wasn't, I grew up speaking both languages, pretty bilingual from a young age, but my father organized all of the parents in my elementary school who were English-language learners into a parents' association while he was hustling at all of his different jobs. And I just think that we need to think about how we can better support that level of engagement from the parents of our ELL students, so that we can see them thrive. And we know now, and I've talked about this ad nauseam, we have an increasing immigrant population coming into our city from a bunch of different places, and I think this is the right moment for us to have this hearing and talk about it. So thank you to the sponsor for bringing this to the floor.
Thank you, Council Luizhen. The Chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my colleagues, particularly Councilor Anderson, for having the foresight to really recognize that while, yes, there's a conversation around English-language learners and students, there's a very different conversation to be had around the parents who are navigating the space, right? These are two separate issues, and oftentimes, when we come into this chamber, we try to mix everything all into one. But unpacking them and dedicating time to each is really strategic and smart of you. So I really do appreciate you bringing this to the floor. And, you know, I often talk about the fact that my mom, you know, was undocumented for a period of time, and we think about a lot of families who are coming to this country, many recent arrivals, who have interrupted education. So it's language access, but it's also their understanding of the importance of education and how important it is for them to be fierce advocates for their children. You know, as the official translator for my mom, I got away with a lot of things, including dropping out of school and going back because I translated for her. So whenever there was a call about me skipping school, I'd be like, blah, 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 and I would say whatever I felt I needed to say so that my mom would not know. This is an issue, and I'm sure this is an issue that still continues today. And I think that this level of investment in really making sure that we're supporting English-language learners and their parents is crucial in setting students up for success. So I really do look forward to hosting the hearing and, more importantly, identifying what it is that we need to do to change this for our families. And I'm glad that BPS is in its early stages of developing their budget, because this is sounding the alarm that this needs to be a priority issue in terms of support. So thank you for hearing this, and I look forward to bringing it on to the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mejia. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you, Councilor Anderson, for putting this forward. As you know, I was an ESL teacher for many years, and as a parent myself, I know that parental involvement is key to children's success at school. And I know that there are resources and there are departments in BPS, but they give that language support to administration. And for several years, I was a special ed coordinator. And at the meeting, you could request translation, but there was never access for parents beforehand when the testing was going on and when the teachers wanted to have parent conferences. So I will, I'm looking forward to the hearing and the work ahead, but I do want to make sure we focus on making sure that these language-access resources are at the classroom teacher level, because it's the teachers who are day in and day out communicating with the parents. And oftentimes, they'll say, well, we do that. There is an office. Your newsletter can be translated if you send it to this email. But we definitely need to make sure that when a parent needs to know if it's 10 o'clock or if it's a bus pickup or drop-off, so just making sure we focus in on the teachers and the parents who are working directly and the school bus drivers with the parents, because that's who our parents communicate mostly with. So thank you for this hearing, and I look forward to the work ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Murphy. The Chair recognizes Councilor Coletta. Councilor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. I just want to thank Councilor Fernandez-Anderson for pushing this forward and for highlighting the needs and opportunity gaps within the entire ecosystem that uplifts our ELL students. We just voted on $1.3 billion within BPS, and there were initial investments in ensuring that there were family liaisons in every single school and ensuring that they speak a second language, but we know that we can be doing so much more. So I just want to thank you again for your, for your leadership. And we know that BPS has struggled to support families where English is a second language, and that has directly impacted the trajectory of those kids that live in my district. And so, again, I commend you and your intentionality in naming all of the stakeholders in the administration, including the Equity Cabinet and those at BPS who are in that, that work as well. And I really look forward to centering parent and guardian voices in the conversation, because it's really their perspective and lived experience that will make us do better. And I also think that we should be looking to them for leading the way. We could do the East Boston High School model, where we recruit from parents to be in these positions. So that's just an idea to put on the table, and I look forward to that hearing and look forward to talking through it with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Coletta. Would anyone else like to speak or add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Councilor Arroyo, Councilor Bach, Councilor Braden, Councilor Coletta, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Lara, Councilor Murphy? Please add the Chair. Docket 1394 will be referred to the Committee on Education. Assistant Clerk, will you please read docket 1395-2? 1397, please?
Docket 1395, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson offer the following order requesting certain information under 17F regarding the mayor's office of housing. Docket 1396, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson offer the following order requesting certain information under 17F regarding Boston Public Schools. Docket 1397, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson offer the following order requesting certain information under 17F regarding Boston Public Works Department.
Thank you, Assistant Clerk. The Chair recognizes Councilor Fernandez-Anderson. Council Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor. Council Fernandez-Anderson, would you, are you speaking on all of them at the same time?
Yes, please.
Okay. The Chair recognizes Councilor Fernandez-Anderson.
Thank you, President Flynn.
Hello.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you, Assistant Clerk. You're doing fabulous. Thank you. I'm requesting 17Fs because it's imperative for, that we know how our city's resources have been used, who is accessing these resources, what is the race of the people accessing these resources, and what percentages? What is the class background and gender of, that are being impacted in order for us to move forward and acquire an understanding of how our city allocates resources? We must have a concrete data that demonstrates point to, by point, how our city's money has been spent. We have all heard the soaring inspiring words, the jargon that flows so smoothly from our tongues about equity, but of course, the jargon doesn't come cost a dime. Capital investments and the corresponding commitment of strengthening our black and brown and our people of lower socioeconomic class irrespective of their backgrounds or race, and working-class communities of colors, of course, that such investments represent, however, do not come cheap. I think we all know that we're already spending money and quite a bit of it. I want to make sure that it's being spent equitably, and for that, we need data. Some of you may remember that I filed the equity hearing or a hearing order on equity in the budget, and I think that these 17Fs, you'll see a lot of them, so I won't take much of your time up here or in the future. It's in preparation, I think it's important for me to aggregate some of this data in order to properly inform the hearing coming forward. I look forward to working with you, and hopefully you will join me in the hearing, so that we can properly assess whether or not the city's dashboard is implementing proper tools in order to measure. And I know that the point of it is to monitor process or progress, but how are we measuring it? Where are the metrics? And how do we actually ensure that if we've declared racism as a public health crisis, then how are we actually leading by example? Whether it be in allocations of the budget through the operational budget or procurements? And I know that the administration has been put for, been putting forth a lot of efforts in terms of accountability, looking at ways to create diversity. However, I think that across the board in our city, during the budget season, we saw how inequitable or racially inequitable we are spending money and, or contracting out. So I look forward to getting that information. And to the administration, I think that it's important for them to, for me to acknowledge that this is, this is still collaborative work here, whether it's a 17F or I'm placing a phone call or an email to you, really, it's not, you know, bringing down a gavel. I am, I'm just a speck on a leaf. I am small, and I'm just here to do some work and in full transparency. I think it looks like this that I file and that I come on public platform, and I am able to say, hey, look, I need this information, and can we have a conversation about it? And I'm going to prepare the information, and then we're going to have a conversation, and hopefully, we can all put our money where our mouth is. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Fernandez-Anderson. Council Fernandez-Anderson, seek suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1395. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1395 has passed. Council Fernandez-Anderson, seek suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1396. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1396 has passed. Council Fernandez-Anderson, seek suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1397. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1397 has passed. We're on to personnel orders. Assistant Clerk, please read docket 1398, please.
Docket 1398, Councilor Flynn for Councilor Arroyo offers the following.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1398. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Assistant Clerk, can you please read docket 1399, please?
Docket 1399, Councilor Flynn for Councilor Arroyo.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1399. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Assistant Clerk, can you please read docket 1400, please?
Docket 1400, Councilor Flynn for Councilor Mejia.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1400. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. We are on to late files. I am informed by the clerk that there are two additional late-file matters. The additional late-file matters include a letter of absence from Council Rurrell, a resolution from Council Fernandez-Anderson. The late-file matters should be on everyone's desk. We will take a vote to add these items into the agenda. All those in favor of adding the late-file matters into the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The late-file matters have been added to the agenda. Assistant Clerk, can you please read the first late-file matter, which is the letter of abs, letter of absence from Council Rurrell, please?
Okay. November 9, 2022. Dear President Flynn and Council colleagues, please be advised that I am unable to attend today's City Council meeting as I will be out of the state. My staff will be in attendance, and I will review the tapes of the meeting when it becomes available. Thank you. Brian Rurrell.
Thank you. The first late-file matter will be placed on file. Assistant Clerk, can you please read the second late-file matter, which is the resolution from Council Fernandez-Anderson, please?
From Council Tania Fernandez-Anderson and Council Brian Rurrell. Resolution to request Walgreens to postpone all closure of Boston's location. Walgreens has recently announced that they would be closing three Boston locations in Roxbury, Mattapan, and Hyde Park, all preliminary black, brown, and working-class communities and...
What is the new resolution?
...result. Walgreens should not open any new location in Boston until they have committed to aforementioned postponement, allowing them, the city, and the communities to assess the impact neighborhoods properly. Therefore, the Boston City Council call upon Walgreens to postpone and propose closure of the store's location in several of Boston preliminary black, brown, and working-class communities, and they should not open any new store in the city until they agree to do so. Fad on November 9, 2022.
Thank, thank you, Assistant Clerk. The Chair recognizes Council Fernandez-Anderson. Council Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Council President Flynn. Walgreens recently announced that it will be closing three of their locations in Roxbury, Mattapan, and Hyde Park, all predominantly working-class communities with majorities black and brown residents. The announcements of said closures were made in a stealth manner with insufficient time allotted for customers and workers to plan for the terminations of the establishments. These closings problematic, closings problematic in their own right are particularly disturbing in light of the fact that Walgreens is doing exceptionally well. For fiscal year 2022, Walgreens has made $4.3 billion compared with $2.1 billion FY2021, reflecting a $2.5 billion gain in the after-tax income for the corporation. In other words, operating income at Walgreens has increased 54% over the previous fiscal year. Additionally, their CEO, Rosalind Brewer, made over $28 million in total compensation this year compared to less than $17.5 million earned by her predecessor in 2021. In comparison, many Walgreens workers make our local minimum wage of $14.25 an hour, with store managers often making just a couple of dollars an hour more than that. So for them to hide behind financial loss, and we understand that there's all of the issues with mass and cast in Nubian Square, with the untreated population there in and out, however, they, for, for, basically, while they're hiding behind the financial loss, while more than doubling their income over the previous year and paying the CEO more, also Roxbury, Mattapan, Hyde Park, are working-class communities with a lot of elderly housing. My team is very thorough, y'all. I'm not going to read the whole dissertation thing today, but I really just want to emphasize that, obviously, this is a big ask, but I want to have a conversation about it. It is a resolution. I want to have a conversation about it and really be able to assess how these closures are impacting our communities. We've held a community listening session. I've called Walgreens several times. We've sent them letters, and we've visited inspectional services, called inspectional service several times over there, and then I compared the locations. I went to downtown in different areas, and of course, in other more affluent communities, Walgreens seems to be doing beautifully and clean and smells good, and everything's doing fine and well-stocked with security and staff. And so, hopefully, Walgreens will be receptive to this conversation and really understanding you are making money in, in communities of lower socioeconomic class, and yet you are profiting and making a huge profit margin in increase, $2.5 billion, a lot of money. So hopefully, again, you guys, sorry, my council colleagues, will support me in this conversation to really hold them accountable. It's not okay. Again, we have a lot of elderly senior homes in Nubian Square, in and around Roxbury, Mattapan, and everyone is just devastated and not knowing what the solution will be. So we're making efforts. I'm open to suggestions from my colleagues. If you'd like to offer, of course, any types of services or resources that may assist in terms of transportation or delivery services for pharmaceuticals, please, I'm, I'm open to talking so that we can assist our constituents. Thank you so much, President Flynn.
Thank you, Council Fernandez-Anderson. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Council Coletta. Council Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn, and thank you again, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, for your leadership. I think it's reprehensible that a major corporation is actively telling a broad swath of people too bad, so sad, when it comes to their health and wellness and putting their profits first. And I vividly remember, I was, I was young at the time, everybody knows I'm young as well. I remember Mayor Menino at the time telling Chick-fil-A to kick rocks when they were being discriminatory towards the LGBTQ community. And so, we can do this. We have leverage. And so, I think that doing this will bring them to the table, and I am more than happy to support this resolution. So thank you.
Thank you, Council Coletta. The Chair recognizes Council Mejia. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Councilor Anderson for filing this resolution. I want to be, I want to understand... I want to be, I want to understand if we're going to have a conversation like a hearing on this too, if that's what you're asking for, because I do think that there is an opportunity for us here on the council to really look at how people are doing business in our city and what opportunities exist for Walgreens to put their money where their mouth is and if they're going to shut down, how they can invest in smaller mom-and-pop-owned pharmacies. But I know there's Pharmacy Lux that is in Mission Hill area. It's owned by a Latino group of folks. So I think that there are opportunities for us to seize this moment, to encourage Walgreens to, if they're going to shut down, how that we can reallocate some of those resources to support small minority business owners to be able to do that, as well as providing the financial resources if we're going to set up delivery services to set, to, to have them pay for it. Because when there is a will, there is a way, and I think everybody needs to, you know, pay. So we'd just like to offer that as we continue to have this conversation, and I am in support of the resolution as is, but am curious to know if the lead sponsor is considering hosting a hearing, because I think it is worth a conversation, diving in a little bit deeper to figure out how we can make this happen. And yeah, add my name and me as third sponsor if you want to.
Thank you, Council Mahia. The chair recognizes Council Royal. Council Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the makers. I have several Walgreens that are closing in neighborhoods I represent, and this really speaks to not just decisions made by corporations, but also decisions in terms of who has health access and who doesn't have health access and how these sorts of changes really impact communities and people who rely on them to receive their prescription medications and receive the healthcare support that they need. So I think it's important that we look at how these decisions get made, and we also look at preventative measures to sort of prepare in the future so that things like this don't occur again where we have sort of islands where you can only get your prescription medication from one specific location, which creates sort of issues like this when those, when those corporations make decisions to close in very specific neighborhoods. And when I say very specific neighborhoods, I represent communities of color, and many of these closures are happening in communities of color in the city of Boston. And I think that we have to really have a conversation about how corporations who make profits and dictate so much of how our seniors and people in our communities receive their medications, make these kinds of decisions, what thinking goes into these kinds of decisions and the ways in which we can legally try to prevent or postpone these kinds of decisions from being made in ways that impact and harm our, our community residents. So thank you, Council Fernando Zanderson. I would also say it's worth a hearing, especially if Walgreens is willing to come and, and, and speak and answer questions and do the things that they should do as people who do business and make money in this city. And so I would second the hearing, but if it just moves forward as a resolution, add my name, it has my support. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Royal. Would anyone else like to speak or add their name?
It's Council Louie Jean.
I'm sorry. The chair recognized, the chair recognizes Council Louie Jean. Council Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm not going to belabor a lot of the points already made. I just want to thank the, my council colleague for this resolution. I believe we both together at the Walgreens across from the bowling building one evening, and I went in and had a really long conversation with one of the managers, and I appreciate how this resolution really also highlights the plight of the workers, both in terms of how much they've been paid, oftentimes, as I was speaking to them without getting a raise, and oftentimes how they feel like they're responsible for managing this store without any corporate support. And so I just want to highlight the manager that I spoke to about the issue that they're facing and about all the hard work that they've had to do. And of course, as everyone has also spoken to, like what happens when there's a void in the community and folks are not able to access their, you know, life-saving medication, especially in black and brown communities like Roxbury, Mattapan, and Hyde Park. So look forward to having a hearing and bringing them here and holding them accountable, but also thinking about what we owe to the workers who have really shown up for a community when we have absentee corporate entities that have not been doing their part and have not been doing right by our city. So thank you.
Thank you, Council Louie Jean. The chair recognizes Council Lara. Council Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you to the makers for putting forth this resolution. I don't care much for corporations, and I absolutely care less for corporations that come and exploit black and brown neighborhoods, especially corporations like Walgreens. I am standing to add my name and support this resolution as is, but I have to be honest that my stance is to let them shut down. I don't think we need these kinds of folks doing business in our neighborhoods. One of the things that we did when I was at the Boston Public Health Commission, when we realized that we, Roxbury, didn't have access to a full-service supermarket, was that we went to a small mom-and-pop shop, which was called El Platanero, and through grants that we got from the CDC, the city and the Boston Public Health Commission gave them the resources necessary to expand and open a full-service supermarket. And so if Walgreens doesn't want to serve our communities, then I say let them go. I say we put out an RFP through the Boston Public Health Commission, we go through these local pharmacies, and we help them expand into these neighborhoods. You know, F off to them, but thank you for filing this resolution, and I'm happy to support it.
Thank you, Council Lara. The chair recognizes Council Fernando Zanderson. Council Fernando Zanderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. Thank you so much for my council colleagues who've stood up in support. I believe that we do have enough support to pass this today. However, I do feel that everything is a conversation in the spirit of how we lead in democracy. They're not in the room, but I mean, I, I'm in the position of, don't, this is my position, obviously, this is what I'm proposing. However, I feel like there are a lot of constituents, community members, and folks that want to be heard on this issue because of the way that it impacts them. So I continue on with my original request to, to just send it to committee and hold a hearing. And definitely, yeah, I'm, I'm with you, Councilora Lara. Thank you so much for keeping decorum. And I look forward to the hearing. Thank you to everyone. And I'm sorry, please suspend the rules. If you can please suspend the rules and add Council Mahia as a co-sponsor as well. Council Mahia, that's the last time it's going to work, smooth, not that smooth. All right? No. Choke us. Jokes. Laugh.
Mr. Clerk, could you add Council Mahia as an original co-sponsor?
I got you. I got you.
Would anyone else like to add their, would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Council Royal, Council Bar, Council Braden, Council Coletta, Council Fernando Zanderson, Council Flaherty, Council Lara, Council Louie Jean, Council Mahia. Please add the chair. This matter will be referred to the Committee on Small Business and Professional Licensor. We're on to green sheets. Anyone to, anyone wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. The, before I continue, the chair recognizes Council Mahia.
Thank you. President Flynn, would like, now that this is going into a hearing, would like for you to consider placing it in the Economic Empowerment and Labor Committee, because I believe some of the points that Council Anderson uplifted here has to do with labor and how we treat our, our workers. And because this is really about economic empowerment, I do believe in the spirit of helping to support small mom-and-pop shops that we have an opportunity to expand that conversation within that space. So I'd love to ask you to consider placing this in the Economic Empowerment and Labor Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Mahia. I did have a discussion on this subject, but I still, I think the Small Business and Professional Licensor would be the appropriate committee. We're on to green sheets. Council Baker. Mr. Clerk, Council Baker would like to pull dockets 1265, 1266, 1267, 1268 from the green sheets. Assistant clerk, can you read the dockets into the record?
15 and 16.
Yeah, we go.
From the Committee of Planning and Development. Sorry. From the Committee of Planning, Development, and Transportation, docket 1257, petition of free drive you for license to operate motor vehicle carriage of passenger for hire over certain streets and buildings.
1265, 1266, and 1267 on page 15, and 1268 on page 16.
Okay, the green sheets, they're not printed all.
Want to brief us?
Yep.
1265, 1266, and 1267 on page 15, and 1268 on page 16.
Okay, the green sheets, they're not printed all.
Want to brief us?
Yep.
We are back in session. Assistant clerk. The chair recognizes Assistant clerk on docket 1265, 1266, 1267, and 1268 from the green sheets.
Docket 1265, City Clerk transmitting a communication from the Boston Landmarks Commission for City Council action on a destination of the petition, 274, point 21, Mount Cavery Holy Church Congressional Share, Tapio, Saigon, Roxbury, Mass. Docket number 1265. Docket 1266, City Clerk transmitting a communication from the Boston Landmarks Commission for the City Council action on destination of the petition, 214.15, Blessed document complex, Jamaica Plain. Docket 1266. Docket 1267, City Clerk transmitting a communication from the Boston Landmarks Commission for City Council action on the destination of petition, 269, point 21, Frederick Alliance Mansion Interior Back Bay, Mass. Docket 1267. Docket 1268, City Clerk transmitting a communication from the Boston Landmarks Commission for City Council action on the destination of petition, 269, point 20, the Howe Kingsley House, Dorchester, Mass. Docket 1268.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, on docket 1265, 1266, docket 1267, docket 1268, can we pull the committee to properly have it before the, the council?
The Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, Councilor Baker.
Aye.
Councilor Rurrell. Councilor Braden.
Yes.
Council Lara.
Yes.
And Council Flaherty.
Yes.
It's properly before the body. The chair recognizes Council Baker on, on those four dockets. Council Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to speak on all four of them together?
Yes.
Okay. Dockets 1265, 1266, and 1267 were unanimously approved by the Landmarks Commission on September 27, 2022. And docket 1268 was unanimously approved by the Landmarks Commission on October 11, 2022. All four were filed by the mayor on October 19, 2022, and if no action is taken by the City Council, they go into effect on November 14, 2022. Passage of these four dockets will allow the properties to be designated as Boston Landmarks. And just so for, for people's own knowledge, docket 165 is, is 1719 Otis Field Street in Roxbury. Docket 1266 is 21 Creighton Street in Jamaica Plain. Docket 1267, which is the Frederick Air Mansion, it's an interior on Commonwealth Ave., 395 Commonwealth Ave. in the Back Bay. And 1268, the Howe Kingsley House is on, is at 16 Howe Street in Dorchester. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Baker. We'll take votes individually on these dockets. Council Baker moves for passage of docket.
Council Bock.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, Council Bock, I didn't, I didn't see your light there. The chair recognizes Council Bock. Council Bock, you have the floor.
My, my apologies, Mr. President. I just wanted to say very briefly that we're really excited about the landmarking of the interior of the Air Mansion. It's like this kind of very rare, incredible thing where Tiffany, the jewelry company, did the interior of the whole house. And when the property went up for sale a couple of years ago, there was considerable concern that because only the exterior was landmarked, that that interior could just be lost. And so a lot of folks sort of rallied and had, and actually ultimately it was sold to someone who wants to keep it anyways, but in the process of that, the idea of preserving this interior was born. And so just really excited about it and also just wanted to express gratitude to the Landmarks Commission for, obviously, Council Baker's been moving a lot of these, and that's because they, with the additional staffing that we got for them, have been really accelerating the pace of finishing study reports and making these recommendations. And although I just spoke to the one that's in my district, it's very gratifying to see them be all over the city and in everyone's districts, because I think that was part of what the council was aiming for with funding that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Bock. Council Baker moves for passage of docket 1265. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. That docket has passed. Council Baker moves for passage of docket 1266. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. That docket has passed. Council Baker moves for passage of docket 1267. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All opposed, say nay. That docket has passed. Council Baker moves for passage of docket 1268. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That docket has passed. We're on to the consent agenda. I have been informed by the clerk that there are, there are no additions to the consent agenda. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. Memorials. Today, we'll adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Councilor Bock, Hester Fuller. For Councilor Braden, Frances Keaty. John O'Brien. For Councilor Coletta, Ruth Gorman. For the Chair, Winnie Zoo. For the Chair and Councilor Lara, Joseph Antonuccio. For Councilor Louie Jen, Ruth Ellen Benjamin. Edwin Pizarro. Kiznik Ball. For Councilor Murphy, Teresa Terry Ryan. For Councilor Rell, Herman Max Halton. Jasmine Burrell. Sandra Porter. A moment of silence, please. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in those mentioned. We are now scheduled to meet again in the Ayinella Chamber on Wednesday, November 30 at 12:00 noon. Before we adjourn, I want to say thank you to the city clerk's team. I want to say thank you to the City Council's central staff. I want to say thank you to my colleagues in the public. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. The council is adjourned.